Okay. I will call the committee of the whole meeting to order for November sixteenth, about five o'clock. You know, as just to say, as this is a committee of the whole meeting, so there's, you know, no action is taken with this, with this meeting. This is really just for the board to have discussions and, and have conversations in a more, kind of not open, but certainly brainstorming type of a, of a way. So anyway, so that's, that's it. Um, just to start off the meeting, and I don't want it to derail us from the important work that we have to do this evening, because I really want to make sure we have a good amount of time, but there have been some twists and turns that happened. Really starting, well, starting last week and going through the weekend and then culminating in this, this Monday. So I thought it would be good for Jeff, just to, just to take a couple of minutes and update everybody on the board as to exactly what's, what's transpired. So Jeff, you wanna?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll try and debrief. You know, it's been a, a busy last, you know, four days or so with the number of cases that have come forth. So show over the weekend, yeah, we had a couple Friday, but then we had about five more this, I think it was five, yeah, five this weekend, had two more today, a high school and a middle school. A lot of pending cases, we've reevaluated the high school into this morning, spoke with Steve Mansfield from Ledge Light. The concerns, you know, we're growing with the number of cases, not just isolated to, you know, one specific area too, as there was kind of a cluster that had occurred. So now it's more spread across the high school. So we, as I texted you all, we are going remote until the thirtieth of November, and hopefully we'll have, you know, kids back at the high school and kids back at the middle school on those, that day, that Monday. Elementarys are still, you know, open and will, will remain open. Um, the other piece that came forward, it was an email from Steve Mans, and that was the other reason I was on a quick conference call with him today. So in relation to, they are now turning over the contact tracing to districts. So that means that in, in, we're gonna talk more, we have a training with them tonight. So I've got every building administrator, as well as a secretary, as well as the nurse and nursing supervisors that are gonna partake in this training tonight at seven o'clock. But, you know, I, I kinda go back and forth on this, you know, the medical professionals in Legelite have, have done this, but now we're going to be doing it. You know, this could be upwards of, at times, you know, we've got eighty-three people quarantined right now, you know, across the, the high school between students, mostly students and staff. That's a lot of calls. I mean, last night, we were making, you know, ten to twelve calls ourselves, which to myself, Jackie, Deb, you know, and Henry at the high school. So there's concern about how we're gonna kind of handle this, you know, moving forward. So we're gonna work through the training, though. We're gonna get, you know, feedback from Legelite as to the process that they use, and we'll kind of assess, reassess afterwards. We're trying to help them out. They've done a marvelous job and have been great about the contact tracing. They've been doing it twenty-four seven. They're just totally overwhelmed. So we're gonna work to help them out. It, it is a burden, obviously another additional burden on, you know, administrative, administrators and weekend time and yada, yada, yada. But, you know, we'll work through it. We'll figure it out. And I just wanted the board to know that that's gonna be on us now with the contact tracing, as well as, you know, the quarantine calls too. So that's about, that's it for right now. You know, and again, I don't want to take up too much time, but any, any quick questions at all that are clarification components with any of that?
Jeff, it's Jill. Quick question. I just don't know how, how you can add anymore to everyone else's plate. That's my biggest concern. So let's see if we can get it a little more deeper, a little bit higher and a little bit more pressure. I mean, I under, I've known for a long time they can't do it and do an adequate, not an adequate job, but they've been overwhelmed with it. So now they decided to put it on the schools who already have more, more responsibility in this whole thing than, you know, you got, I'm sure you're working twenty-four seven. So I don't know if we can, if we, if you wanna do it and take it on, I don't know if there's any alternative help you can find, but I think it's, I, I just don't think you should be called on to do it. I think it's too much for the school system right now, my opinion only. Thank you all.
No, thanks, thanks, Jill. We're, we're looking at that and seeing if there's, you know, maybe some alternatives with some of this. You know, it, yeah, that's another reason, you know, the high school is, is, you know, going remote too. We just, we can't keep up with, you know, with all the calls and pending cases. So Candace?
So do we have a choice in this? And if we don't have a choice, thinking maybe outside of the box, is it something that we could partner with some of our regional districts? Because I would imagine that they will be in the same boat, being, you know, in that jurisdiction. If it's something that we can look at and possibly partner, I'm just looking for the, I don't wanna say it, like the professional that we need. I'm just concerned with that, that we're, that you are going to be making a medical call or what is deemed to be, and you're not a medical profession. I mean, we are professional. We've been kind of reliant upon the agencies that do this. So I would imagine that that's where you're gonna be getting this training, and it's almost like a delegation, almost type of task. So I would imagine at some point, there is going to be some sort of medical advisory that we will be reliant upon to make a call.
Yeah, and hopefully some of that will come out tonight, you know, with this, with this training, with a little bit more clarity. Again, we just got it last night. So I was reaching out quickly to the administrative staff and trying to get this set up for tonight at seven o'clock to be on the call. So we'll, we'll see what they share with us. I mean, it's, it's from the beginning, it's supposed to have been a partnership, you know, and it has been a partnership, you know, they, again, they have been great. They have worked, you know, countless hours, you know, as we all have here. But, you know, they've been there. I think they, they still will be there if, you know, if we need them, but I wanna support them as well. But we can't overwhelm ourselves as a district either. So I don't care. It's maybe sharing, you know, or having a one liaison, you know, for the district or two or three districts that does all of these calls, you know, we, we're gonna brainstorm some options.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there. I mean, we also already have medical advisors that are part of our team. You know, we can really just think outside of the box there and see where we.
Yep. Bill, you wanna say something?
I just, Jeff, you, I'm just to clarify, if we are closed that we're not doing contact tracing, I mean, somebody's gotta still do the contact tracing for the community, even if we're closed, correct?
Oh, yeah, we still have to do it. Yeah.
Okay.
We still have to make.
I'm sorry. I should say, no, I shouldn't say closed. I mean, remote.
Yeah, yeah, I, yep. But we still need to message out to the community. Every time there's a case, we, we will still send, you know, a notice out, whether we're.
In essence, we're taking on contact tracing for any member of the school, community, adult, parent, kid?
Exactly, exactly. The only thing we're not taking on is when we have to call an individual, say it's a student, and that student works at Stop and Shop, and the student reports, oh, you know what, at Stop and Shop, I was in the workroom with three other workers. That was my question. Now, do I have to call Stop and Shop to let them know that their primary contacts? Because, you know, that, but let's say, said, no, that, that's something they would work out and they would take care. We would just be responsible for any, but any calls amongst our school community.
So you're shit, you're gonna be working in, in tandem with and parallel with then?
In, in that sense, yes. I just don't know how that's gonna work yet, you know, because now you're splitting calls. So there's gotta be a level of communication there, so things.
Yeah. And do we know what, do we know, is there some software or some system that they've established to try to keep this clean? Versus post-it notes on their desk?
I have no idea. That's, yeah, that, I, that I don't know yet. So hopefully they'll have something we can discuss tonight.
Would there be a chance that you could maybe fill us in somehow after this meeting, after your meeting, so that we could all be apprised of what your outcomes were?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'll fill you in tomorrow. I'll gather some more information, obviously, tonight. You know, there, there's some bargaining issue components too that we have to be leery of as well with the administrators and, you know, putting so much more on, you know, everybody now, weekends, et cetera. It's, it's a lot.
Right, of course.
I can notify you tomorrow with the kind of the outcomes.
Yes, please. Because also I'm thinking that there's a lot of staff who might not be as busy as they would be otherwise. I'm thinking some of the assistants, principals assistants, secretaries, administrator assistants, all those people at the middle school and high school, maybe they could be used and could we use some volunteers? There's people who'd be willing to do it. Of course, they'd have to sign confidentiality agreements and be sworn to secrecy, but I think there'd be people who'd be willing to do it.
Yeah, as long as they're trained, Kate. That's my only concern. We don't want people, you know, we can't just pick somebody up, you know.
Of course. But we have some pretty smart people in the community, I think, that would do it for nothing, just to help.
Eric?
Jeff, are other health districts doing, changing the model as well, or is Ledge Light taking the lead? Where, do you have any idea?
We're looking into that across the state. We reached out to Fran Ribito, it's the chair for, or the executive director for CAPS. From what we've heard so far, this is a changeover, but what they're trying to do is their CAPS is trying to push the commissioner of education to get some funding. So we can, districts can, can either pay staff to do this. Like, you know, if secretaries are doing this on the weekend, you know, I, I know Kate, some people will volunteer, but they're not gonna do it for free. We're gonna end up having to pay people, you know, to, to do this on the weekend, so it's an added cost. So Eric, to answer your question, yes, some of their, they have moved over. I just don't know how many with the number of health districts across the state.
Well, I think you're hearing from, oh, sorry, just, I think what you're hearing from everyone, maybe John as well, is just, it seems, this seems completely backwards. It's, you know, you're taking the, you have the experts or should be the experts, and it seems like we need to solve their, like, how can we help them, but they should still lead and coordinate, and then we should help them versus us leading and coordinating for them. So I don't know if there's some way like that we can provide resource to help them. I understand they're overwhelmed, but maybe there's things that we can do to help them rather than just turn it over. Turning it over just sounds like we're working too hard, we got too much, here, you guys figure it out.
Yeah.
And I, I hope it's not that, but that's what it kind of feels like, which is not good, which is not.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep that partnership mentality. Again, I, I'll know much more tonight as they.
Thanks, Jeff.
John, you, you wanna say something?
Yeah, just real quick. So Legelite woke up and said yesterday, hey, let's have a call today, meaning tonight, and we're gonna hand over the keys to you guys in term, because Legelite isn't just East Lime, right? So it's a couple other school districts. So I think in terms of from a process standpoint, one, I mean, I'll talk to Paul tonight, or Jeff, you should reach out to Senator Formica, because that's, that's just passing the buck down to school districts. And it's, I mean, there should be something in terms of if CAPS is talking to the, to the education commissioner, there should be some more pushback on that, because it shouldn't just have the turned over to us. It's just, it's not the process, so.
Yeah, there's ten districts. I can forward you the email too, so you can see.
If there's, if there's ten, ten school districts, I mean, that's a complete, here you go, go. It's insane, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So Jeff, that, I can't remember, it was Kate that asked that would be good for you to just send out a little note tomorrow, even if it says we're still, still in deliberations or something about it, but just so the boards kept the, kept raised of the situation, so.
Jeff, just say no.
Lot, lot of moving parts to that.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm, I'm channeling firstly.
Yeah, we're, we're, we wanna work, they've been great. We wanna work with them. It's just figuring out the balance now of how this is, how this is gonna work. So we'll, we'll get it. We'll figure it out.
Okay, so let's, let's move into the reason that we're all gathered today on, on my birthday. And that is, that is to carry on with a dialogue on diversity, inclusion and equity that we've been kind of stuck on kind of allowing everyone to have a chance to, to talk and to, and to speak. Just to give you a, kind of a rundown of what Jeff and I had thought we would do is the most important thing today is for everybody to be, to feel open and free and to share any thoughts that they have concerning this very important topic. We've passed along some information for you, and I apologize that we didn't get it out sooner, but there was some additional examples of what district level. I'm sure there's tons more out there. We thought, well, we would do is we might have a chance, quick, at the commitment statement that was drafted, that's kind of under review, just to see if everybody's, where everybody's head is around that. And then we have the problem statement that, that we have, as well as kind of just a listing of some of the ideas, short and long term, in terms of, of what actions we, we might take. But that's really just a collage of, of things that have popped up as we've been, been having some conversations. By no means it's a definitive list. And then hopefully we'll have a couple, we'll have enough time. There aren't, there is no time bound on this, so to, to kind of figure out exactly where, where we wanna go as a group. But anyway, so I thought the, the most important thing was to kind of, kind of pretend like we were at the end of one of the sessions we had with Joelle. We were all dying to talk, and if we could kind of, kind of, kind of get, get, get into that mode, I think that that would be, would be a great thing to, to do. Just to kind of get any, any thoughts and ideas and things out or concerns, issues that people have in their, in their top, in the forefront. Jeff, did you wanna say anything before we kind of open the floor here?
Yeah, let me just add that, you know, we, we shared some, some links too of different, you know, thoughts, ideas, some action plans. Eric sent a few, you know, Jackie had helped out. We found, you know, a few here. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at some of those, just to kind of help give us some direction. But I think, you know, Tim is spot on. One opportunity to kind of open up some dialogue, first and foremost, to hear from folks and then, and try and move into some, some next, you know, to get an outcome in, in some action steps in place.
Okay, good. Okay, so who would like to share any thoughts or, or things that they've been holding back because we, we've not had enough time? So I, I will, but is anybody that would like to go first? No?
I have my hand up.
Okay, good, good, Kate.
Well, one thing I think that Joelle did really nicely was to encourage us to use I-statements and then the respect and the kindness that she told us that we should all kind of have at the front of our head, which I think is great. But then also, sometimes I feel like if we can be more succinct in our responses with having been in Toastmasters for, I don't know how many years now, it's one thing that you try to have your discussions within, like, you know, your little soundbites, almost like ninety seconds. Like, you should be, be able to pretty much get a pretty good, clear idea across in sixty to ninety seconds. So if we could all kind of think how we can get that, and then I think we can plow through our list and things that we wanna accomplish. Like, we don't need the backstory all the time, is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, good, good point. Well, let's see. Who, who looks like they're full of information? Eric, I think I saw a hand pop up.
No one else wants to go first. I was trying to let others talk. So I, so first, thanks to Jackie for doing some research and sending that information around. I, I actually found that really, I, I like to do some pre-read and kind of get my head around issues that I'm kind of unsure of and not exactly sure where to go and what to think of. And when I, I looked at it, those, just, just for me, I thought, thought there were some really good, there's three that I'll highlight of the five. Glass, Mary and Hampden had some good information, but, but the three that I'll highlight that I, where I'd like to go. Granby was, I thought, really good for the Connecticut School that I thought had just tons of information, including summer readings and all this stuff that can hit a lot of the different topics and things we're trying to impact. They talk about, you know, your, the staff, educating students and so on and so forth. So I found that very, very interesting, very helpful. And then I did like what Fairfield, Ohio, yeah, Fairfield, Ohio did, that they had a full five-year plan that was pretty good, which is something I'd really like us to get to. And then what I liked about the Humphrey School, which I know that Barry will like, is they actually had outcome and performance metrics, which was, yes. So I thought that was really good. So I thought that there's a lot of information there in addition to what we have, but I, I did like all that, because I think there's, as, as we decide and want to go forward, we're not kind of creating something with a blank slate. I think we have information, maybe we pull, can pull from different things that we, we hold as important that we wanna put in. So I, I thought that was very good. From, from my perspective, in terms of what I wanted to get out, is that I thought we had some great ideas. I thought, you know, Lee, I think it was Lee talking about, you know, partnering with, whether it's HBCs or others and doing something. I know we had that one company come in, but doing something where we can attract diverse talent to, to East Lime. And how do we do that? You know, John talked about, you know, we have New London and other, you know, more diverse communities. You know, why can't we partner more? Like, we don't partner with them to, to, you know, exchange our students in some way to, to different thoughts and ideas. So I really like that. And I also, my other one that I, I personally would like to bring up is, you know, can we have, we need more guest lecturers or, or who are diverse, come speak at our schools. And I'd love, at the high school, which is something I've been trying to implement for three to five years, at least, is that we have a lot of people in East Lime in the community who are, you know, ed, you know, who are professionals in different careers, and it'd be great if they can come in and give lunchtime talk. Obviously COVID put that to the side now, but some of that, maybe Zoom, lunchtime talks, and people can talk. You know, I could talk about business and business school and what could you could do in different careers and business. We could get a science, someone in science to talk about that. But if we did something like that, wouldn't it be really powerful if you also had a great diverse mix of people who could come and give that? So you show that, you know, people of different colors, of different genders, of different backgrounds, whatever, have been successful and able to do this stuff. So that, that was a, a third thing that I'd like to see us do, but I'll pause there. Those, that's some of the, the things that I was hoping to, to get out. So thanks, Tim.
Yeah, very good, very good. Lee?
Um, yeah, a lot of what Eric just shared resonated a lot. I really enjoyed reading through the plans that were sent over. In particular, I was very impressed by the Humphrey School Plan. I thought it was like so clear in terms of these are the six categories that we are going after. These are the goals. These are how we are going to reach them. Everything was measurable. And so I would love to see us explore something aligned with that. The other thing that's on my mind is I'm, I'm, as we move forward through this conversation as a board and as we hopefully get to the place where we're getting ready to create an action plan, I'd like to see us be very intentional about, like, whose voices we're elevating here. I wanna make sure we're planning with and not for, because I think everyone in this group has a lot of great ideas. And we also have a ton of blind spots, and there's a lot of different stakeholders that need to be at the table here. And so as we're thinking through, these are the initiatives that would be really neat to do X, Y, or Z. This is how we wanna map out our plan. I think it's going to be really, really important in order to get this right, that we are prioritizing the voices of our students and families and teachers and everyone, just as much as we're listening to one another on the board. And I know we have the, the committee going on, and that's great. I just wanna make sure we're not working in silos and passing down a plan to be executed, that we're all coming to the table and doing it.
Very good, very good. Excellent. Who else has something? Thing, Barry, you look, you look like you're a bee.
Let me just hold off for a minute, Tim. I'd like to hear what other people say first.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah, no. Okay, buddy else? Bill?
All right, I, I think, you know, Eric and Lee both made some excellent points. And clearly, I'm looking at my Zoom screen right now, and we don't have a heck of a lot of diversity staring back at me. So we've gotta get some folks that have a little bit more experience with, with this, to, to make sure that we aren't missing key components. So we, we, you know, we, we're here trying to do what's right, and we need to do some listening to those folks who are living in our community right now and experiencing the, whatever they're experiencing that we're, that brought the, the group to present to us, you know, before. So I was happy to see that list and to, to revisit that presentation as well. But I think, you know, it certainly would be good to include or listen a little bit more to make sure we work with them on, on anything. And while, I mean, I guess the only thing that I would concern that, that Eric mentioned is like, you know, the summer reading thing is great, but the people who are gonna do that are the people who are already interested in, in, in change, perhaps, versus the folks that don't know that, what they don't know. You know, and, and not everyone is excited about learning what they don't know. So I think it needs to be built into the curriculum. It needs to be part of some requirement versus a suggestion.
Good. So really, yeah, you're really, you're really emphasizing the, a point about increasing the board's aware, you know, the board's awareness by having more people that are, have different lenses, I guess, or different perspectives because of their diversity to, you know, speak with us, to tell us, to look at things, to, to kind of, again, to raise our, you know, make our blind spots come, come, become more visible, I guess. Kate?
I think we should start with the problem statement, and I think that your problem statement that you started out with was a good first draft at it. I think you really hit the mark when, at the very end of it, you say, we need to make one equity. I don't have that written down right, but I think what you need, I think what we need to say is something is that we need to make diversity, equity and inclusion a priority and a joint effort between all the stakeholders across the East Lime community. And I think that's probably how we should start, is some kind of a statement, my opinion. And then I think from that, we should talk about who's marginalized. Are women marginalized? Are people who are LGBTQIA marginalized? Are people of, you know, people of color, black, Hispanics, Indians marginalized? Are people with invisible disabilities marginalized? Who, who are, who fits into those categories? And maybe we need to spell it out. Maybe we don't. I don't know, but that would be, I think, how we should at least start with tonight. I think that there's some good background information with your problem statement, but I think the real meat of it is the last sentence.
Good, good, good. Okay, let's, yeah. Jamie, you gotta, you wanna?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, last year or the year before, the state board of Ed pushed through the Latin American studies and the African-American studies as curriculum options at the secondary level. They also said that they were going to give us curriculum and standards, but I don't know if COVID pushed that off. I'm assuming it has, but Jeff, have you heard anything? It's scheduled for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I know, but it was scheduled, but I don't, it was in, they did it into law two years ago. But I don't know if they fix, found a curriculum or if COVID has pushed all that off.
I think there was some delays, Jamie. I haven't heard specifically, you know, where, where that stands. They're still holding discussions, though I do know that. I just don't know where or when there's a new timeline. They're still holding discussions though. I do know that. Um, I just don't know where or when there's a new timeline. So, but could definitely look into it, you know, with the, you know, we ran calls with Miguel, you know.
No, I know. And that's one of the things I love about cave weekend is that I get all my updates and I.
Yeah, yeah, it was a great.
So we're missed it. We missed all out on that last, this past weekend. So I'm just checking in. I didn't know if we had heard anything new from them.
Yeah, no, not yet. No.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Good point. Anybody else? Can't, oh, Eric, Eric.
I'll, I'll come in again, just, I, cause you know, it's real interesting to hear from everyone. And, and you know, what I'm, what I'd like to see is that we take kind of this multi-pronged approach to kind of address this. And, and for me, there's, what I'm a little worried about is that I'm going to look and it's 11:16, it's Tim's birthday in 2021. And we're still talking about this and we really haven't done anything. And that's my biggest concern. And I could see it happening because this is hard. And it's really the harder things we all, and we all have different opinions on approach and kind of, and so that I'm really worried about. So the multi-pronged approach is I'd like to get a few things that we can do immediately that we know are going to have impact. And Bill, you're right. I mean, we need other people's opinions. Hundred percent agree. But as we get the group larger, my concern is then it takes longer. And it's not to say that's okay, because we want to get it as right as we can. Um, but we want to get it, do what, doing a good job. But I think there are some things that we can do in the short term that I, I'd really have a lot of passion about trying to do both. So do some things in the short term. At the same time, think about that broader group. And, and I know we have an equity committee or some, something already, but to give them some, target, target, I give them, um, the words, um, escaping me, but you know, give them something to say, hey, can you guys look and come up with some ideas that they could come back to us with? And obviously we'd be part, some of us would be part of that discussion. And that we'd start looking at our five-year plan, you know, the Humphrey Plan or the, the others and, and start looking at, at things we can do. So that's what I'd, I'd like to see that we do some things that we can do quickly and we know are right. And then also do something that's kind of a middle broader and stuff. So I'll stop there.
I'll just echo that, Eric, because you know, with that Equity and Inclusion Committee for the District, you know, we, we were trying to identify what, what would be, you know, one or two big ticket items that we really could focus on and get up and running this year. One was we sent them back to their schools to formulate a subcommittee potentially to get members of the school, you know, to formulate a smaller group that can then report to the larger district groups. That would be one, one component this year that we really want to try and have set up. Uh, but I, I echo that. If we could find some hardcore, you know, one or two or three big ticket items that we could get done, I think that'd be a win for this year, given the craziness of it.
I saw, uh, Bill raised his hand and then Barry's got his hand up.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent that we should keep, keep getting moving on this, but we, as we're moving, you know, I think there are certain safe things that we can do that are, um, probably not going to offend, for lack of a better word, the, the group that we're trying to, to address here or, or help out. Um, you know, uh, certainly working towards hiring some diversity in the staff is not something that is, that's a, that's a must do. And the thing that really struck me during the presentation and, 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 and over and over again, you hear that, um, a child seeing someone that is like them doing something is a really powerful thing. So there's no harm in bringing in that speaker, in my opinion, that is of a different color. That is, you know, the person who's working at Pfizer on this vaccine versus the person who looks like me or you. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I think those are, and those are relatively easy things. And there are things that, well, Barry, we may not be able to measure in terms of impact on the, the student, but we could say, okay, how many speakers were in the high school this year and how many of them were, you know, of a certain, you know, what, what, whatever target we're looking for, for that. We could say, well, you know, instead of having zero this year, we had eight that came in and spoke. So, and I, you know that those, those kids, based on what we've heard, are going to be, that's cool. That's someone that looks like me that's having that conversation. So I, I agree that we can get going on some relatively easy ones. And then like Lee said, make sure we don't miss some important items. So, and I, and again, Jeff, I appreciate you putting, keeping track of what we've already done. You, we have started the ball rolling by having some PD with the staff already. I mean, it, it's just, we got to start with awareness and then get going on the actions.
Yeah, very good, very good. Barry?
Been doing a lot of, uh, thinking and reading about this. And one of the frameworks that was very useful to me and understanding it was about what is the role of purpose of a body like ours? You know, essentially we exist as an information processing entity. And our role for the school district is to figure out how to take issues that have a lot of, uh, what they called messiness or the, the research term was equivocality. And strip the equivocality from it and make it unequivocal or make it clear. And so if it take that idea for this whole issue of equity and diversity, it's a very messy, amorphous, highly equivocal issue that has 10,000 facets to it. And our role as a board is to strip that equivocality and make it unequivocal or specific and clear for action that our schools can take. And, um, so on that idea, I think then that, that turned me to looking at, uh, when I looked through all the other plans that are out there, most of them were highly equivocal. You know, they didn't do in my mind, a good job of really stripping away the equivocality of the issue of equity and diversity. The only one that came close to it was the Humphrey thing, because it started to say in very specific terms, this is what we mean by, um, solving the issue of equity and diversity. And in a sense, by making it very clear, they made it unequivocal, which was their responsibility to do. So I think that, you know, our job basically is to make a very clear, unequivocal statement about what we're trying to do. And I, I sent a, uh, potential draft to, uh, Jeff and Tim for possible consideration that, uh, ends with a simple statement that goes, you know, the problem. And so it's, it's basically defining the problem in very specific terms. Has something like, how can Eastslime schools advance the equity and inclusion for all members of our school community? And by doing that, if we can do that and that becomes our focal state, statement, then every action we consider, we have to anchor it on that to say, if we are going to do this item or that action or this issue, we're doing it because it advances the, the equity and inclusion for all members of our community. If it can't do that. Um, and as I looked at Glassbury, Hammond, and Gravity, Gravity, a lot of this stuff is out there. They're going to have meetings. They're going to have, um, readings. They're going to do this. It's like, all right, that's good stuff. But unless it's acted into the specific problem statement they're dealing with, that say, as a result of doing this, here's how we're going to advance equity and inclusion. Uh, it's, um, it's fluff. And it's not going to result in any action. So I think that, again, uh, see, our role is basically taking a highly amorphous, uh, issue with great deal of equivocality and trying to make it as clear, specific and unequivocal as possible, so that it generates and guides action for our, um, district.
Yeah. It shared, uh, but Barry, thank you for sharing what you, what you did. I compiled it onto kind of one page and it's what you're looking at here with, you know, that, uh, suggested problem statement. Um, some performance measures as well that Barry mentioned, Barry did bring up the Humphrey School, uh, and their strategies. Um, as well as, um, so one more suggestion, Barry, you found anything from the Humphrey School model, which was right here that you sent, uh, as well, kind of action or strategy to advance equity inclusion and then outcome measures, uh, as an idea or, you know, kind of something to, to frame it around as, as a possibility. So thanks for, for sharing that, Barry.
That's good. Okay. Jeff, can we go back so he can see everybody?
There you go.
Good. Okay. Now Candace, you've been very quiet. So I've, I've either you're, you're, you're ready to pounce on us here with some, something or?
No, not at all, not at all. Um, well, I was, uh, happy to see the pre reads. I think that that was a really great opportunity to kind of see what other districts and how they've navigated. Um, I did, there was a few that stood out for me and Granby was one of them. I liked the five-year plan in Ohio. But Humphrey School, of course, and yes, I did think of Barry right off the bat with that. Um, I, and I liked how they've, that they've positioned that. So it was nice to kind of see a bit of a guider, if that makes any sense. Um, I liked that. I, for the commitment statement, I like that. And then in addition to what Kate was saying about what our commitment is and then the ending, but it was actually, it was not of this. It was the other letter. I'm trying to go back. Um, it was actually in the problem statement, but stating, um, the things that we have put in place. But as we move forward, we want to branch that out more as far as we had talked about a task force. Um, which I'm kind of thinking that it's in addition to what we're already doing, bringing other people in from our community. Um, other, hate to say stakeholders, but yes, stakeholders, uh, that way we could have more of a community reach. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Good. Great. Let's see, who hasn't? John, John?
Well, I just go back to what Eric and Bill and, and a couple others were talking about. And I have a very loud puppy right here too. So, uh, puppy and COVID, it's fun. Um, so, uh, of, of those three to four things that are really, that we can do right now in terms of the New London stuff that we were talking about, the HBCU connection, all those things. I, and I really appreciate the work Barry put into all, all of that that we just looked at. But I, when I'm, the HBCU stuff that we talked about and the New London connection, those are like, you know, very ground level things that we can do tomorrow. Um, that, that can show an impact of us actually putting something together, because I've, I, I got a notification somewhere that I've been on the board now for five years or something. And, and as Eric was talking about, it takes a while for things to get through, but this is something that we can do, you know, in the next couple of weeks. I know COVID is obviously presenting different problems, but it, uh, those realistic steps are something that really we need to keep top of mind. So.
John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna acknowledge by ignorance, when you say HCBU, what are you, what are you talking about?
HBCU is historically black colleges and universities, and those are the connections where we can make with admissions officers and admissions counselors. Um, and, and really have a pipeline of, uh, teachers to come back to the school system in terms of recruitment of, if there's a couple of HBCUs that have early childhood education degrees or, you know, teacher degrees that they're looking for placement of those people to, who are graduating to come to different school districts, we can have direct connections with those. And I, I've, I've worked in that industry before in terms of when I was, uh, lobbying in DC, uh, for AIPAC, we had a connect, uh, direct connection with HBCUs. Um, and it, it's a really cool, uh, and vital relationship that you can create from like Jeff's perspective with those folks. Um, it's, and HBCUs are, you know, they're being funded at, uh, a, a, a good level now. Um, that it's, they're just, it's, they're such cool colleges and universities throughout the country. So.
I have a quick question. What's the closest school, HBC, HBC college to us that we can actually go to and recruit? Is there one, like, is there one in New England?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent positive. I think there's one in Delaware.
So that's the closest.
Yep. But I don't know that that's the right, you got to find the right one as well. Like you can't go to Howard. Everybody's going to Howard. You got to find one that's, that's, and, and you want to find a community, you know, we're a suburban community. You hopefully find one that kind of people would want to go to a suburban community. So you, you got to find the right ones to get that pipeline, uh, going.
I understand. Never mind. Jill, you can just Google it and 99 schools pop up and they're in Durham and they're all over the place.
Tim, we haven't heard from you.
Well, yeah, no, I was, well, I wanted everybody to, to, to talk. Um, what I, what I want, what I would like to see is, um, basically us agreeing on two or three things that we could start, just get our arms wrapped around and start making some progress. I think Candace said this very well at the last meeting, which was if we start doing something, it will have an impact on the, on the district as a whole and on the community. There's a, there's a, there's a, if, if, if some, you know, as small as it may seem to us, it will seem like we're really put, we're really moving something that's very large. So I, I really like that. I think having, I personally, I like doing, taking a strategic look at what can we do to increase the diversity in our staff. I, and I think that there's these different options that we have. So that's one, I think we ought, we should really wrap our arms around. I do like the idea of this, this idea of this, of, of guest speakers, um, which are in some sort of program where we tap into a wide range of diversity, um, of having people come in. And, but they'd be talking about their professions, but on, but on the other hand, they will come from very diverse backgrounds and their stories would be, um, quite unique, I think. And that would be really kind of, I, that's, that sounds like something that could, could be done, uh, um, quite easily. Um, I, the thing, the other thing that I think that what I would like to see us do is, is commit to, um, say, I'm, and I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, but you know, in the next six months, um, to basically have the board agree to, um, and develop, I guess, develop a, a much longer range strategic plan with goals and, and, and obviously measurable outcomes and so forth. Um, so to say, here's what we're going to, here's what we as a board are going to, um, try, are, are going to, uh, do in, in the long term. And I think that in order to do that, we have to get, we have to increase our awareness. As Kate was saying, and I think there are a couple of other folks were saying it, Bill was saying it too. Um, we as, as, as a board just need more information, um, and perspective, um, to really, to, to, to open our eyes even more so. And that's where I come back and say, um, you know, guest speakers tapping into various people, I, I suppose. I, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm still very interested in the idea of, of bringing an expert in and having some sort of, of, of an assessment done on the, um, on the district. And I saw in a couple of the plans that, uh, some of the, these communities were actually committing to doing, doing that as well. So that, that's kind of, that's kind of where my head is, is it's all very consistent, I think, with, with what everybody's, um, kind of, kind of saying here. Um, and Jeff, what I, I'll turn, I just say to you, Jeff, what do you, what, where, where, where are you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just chatted down pretty much what everybody had, uh, said, kind of looking for some, some themes. I mean, I, I, I'm right aligned with that too. I, I think it's, uh, within the next, you know, six months or, or as we get into the spring, really started to try and think about the, um, uh, the structure of a new, of a new strategic plan and, and what it should look like, you know, for, for the, uh, the years ahead. But the voices are important, all this too. I keep going back to our staff because we have, I've said it before, many of our staff members are ready to jump right in and are ready to start taking on and, and engaging in lessons and sharing materials. Others are not. Um, so we have to be very cautious there to get people back, you know, more aligned with what they're comfortable in doing. Otherwise you're going to have, you know, it's going to be all over the map. And I don't think that's healthy a, as a district. I think, you know, getting people comfortable, training them, uh, and engaging in trainings, more exposure as well, um, is important. So kind of that's, that's where my head's at, you know, right now. Um, we're, we're trying to focus on those areas. Okay, Candace?
It's so tough, I think, because the limitations that we have right now, because if we were not in the middle of COVID, my first thought would be to not just have school-wide assemblies, but also have that opportunity where small integral peer groups can have conversation with each other. And I think that they're going to learn a lot from each other. Um, of course with, uh, a mediator type person in between to help navigate. Um, also of course Martin Luther King Day, um, and, and kind of looking not just that day, but how we can approach, um, more teachings. So I love what we do for Veterans Day. I always have. And I, I really think that the kids and everyone really gets a tremendous amount out of Veterans Day. Um, because we've started very young, right? And we celebrate in lots of different, um,
we've started very young, right? And we celebrate in lots of different ways. So that might be something possibly to look at, maybe instead of having the day off, having the day in school or modeling something for the week where we're experiencing different types of opportunities, bringing people in from our community. I can think right off the bat, there'd be a tremendous amount of, you know, want to do that. And I think that it would be very beneficial. On the lines of partnering with some of the communities around us, New London, yes, but possibly NFA or, you know, maybe a regional effect. Maybe having a conversation regionally because we're not the only district that's having these conversations. This is a national conversation. Right? And to speak to what Tim had noted, what I had said in the last meeting was that when we really make a public statement, because we really haven't made that public statement. When I feel like we make a public statement, we actually, we make it in a large fashion. We talk to our local paper and that type of thing, and maybe even give an interview for Jeff and kind of really set the tone that we want to reset a new tone here in Eastline and how we're going to do that and kind of go through some strategic points. I really loved the learn opportunity that we learned about the other day. I think that that sounds great, but I am getting there's a lot of money and cost involved. There was maybe some thoughts around. I don't know if there's a different way to approach that instead of maybe going through learn. It might be something worthwhile to kind of look at. That's all I got now.
Good, good. Barry?
Thing that's that's just looking down at Kate Kate's picture, I have to realize that I'm within a 90-second timeframe that she set out for me. So do that. I'm thinking here, like, you know, whether or not this is the singular priority initiative that we're going to do for this district for the rest of the year, or whether we're going to integrate it within the instructional focus of the schools. Now, I'm very concerned that we it becomes integrative, that it is not a singular one-off issue that somehow we figure out, how do we take all this issue of and and seeing equity inclusion for all members of the community and integrate it within all the other activities that are going in the school. And the only way I see to do that would be if we looked at the results of the school improvement plans 19 to 20 to see that as a baseline for our efforts on inclusion and equity. And then as we initiated and developed school improvement plans for 2021, we could integrate those plans within those school improvement plans to get an idea of how specifically we are going forward in this initiative as an initiative that's integrated with all the other actions within our schools.
Okay, Jamie?
So I'm gonna just kind of go outside of school. I think some something that our town has an issue with is is the diversity in our town, not only our schools, but our town. And if we want to get diversity in our town, we need to become more of a welcoming town, right? And and in order to become more of a diverse school, we have to be more of a welcoming and diverse school. So I I think that what we also should do is put something up like our statement when we completed on our website, like make a little tab that gives you straight to how we feel about diversity, how we feel about differences, how we feel all about that. But not only that, but maybe include a few links with what is racial diversity? What is racial anxiety? What is bias? So that people who don't know can click on a reputable link and find out. I did a training last week with the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, and he was amazing. And he gave us tons of websites where we could, after our webinar, we could learn and teach ourselves and go through and get a better idea of what some biases are that you don't know that you have. And he he put it in like a different spin on it, not just people of color, but like different things that you see in everyday life that you didn't know you had a bias against, like blue fire trucks versus red fire trucks. Do you even know that there is blue fire trucks? Kind of like that. So you put it in like an everyday realistic reality. But I I think that's something we have to put into consideration, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I was just kind of, I was kind of thinking that this idea of maybe focusing on Martin Luther King Day or Week is a is a kind of a a a point that we could aim at to do something not, and it wouldn't be, you know, enormous, but but actually to do something more than has been done. I don't know if we would get it up to the level of perhaps what happens around Veterans Day, but I mean, that could be, that could be a a, you know, a a place that we could, we could, you know, aim aim toward. And I don't know, Jeff, if if that was something that something like that would be something that would resonate with your with the with the diversity committee.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I I think that committee is is very open, Tim, I think, to to anything we want to talk about right now, you know, I just, you know, we tried to keep that premise of 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 not expanding too wide for this year, but you know, and honing in on what what we can do really well and make work. You know, for for this year specific. But I think they'd be open to hearing about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, Eric, I remember Eric a couple of meetings ago was was saying even with the commitment statement that we have drafted or if or something that would be even more more involved, it's kind of like you need, you know, you kind of need a an event or something to kind of, you know, roll something like that out. So and and perhaps trying to trying to do some very simple things, but around the 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 Martin Luther King timeframe would be a would be a would be a short-term goal, which would, you know, again, would be showing that some some something, the movement. And so I maybe that's maybe that's something we should aim at.
I mean, I I like that. And that's kind of why I said that. But I also kind of want to include go bigger, you know, really, we want to put it out there and we want to make a mark and we want to set a tone. And with doing that, that is going to have a trickle effect into the community. And then we continue. We just continue. It's going to be systematic, right? And eventually we will get into, I think, the community in in the areas that we need to. Not right off the bat. It's not going to happen right off the bat. We have to lead with it. We have to lead with it. So when we do go out with it, you know, it's something that we can talk to the Eastline High School saga about. I'm sure they would love to, you know, take the opportunity and write a great article about, you know, where we're going and and why and what the hopes are with it. And also the day paper, you know, maybe sit down for Jeff to sit down and have an interview and talk about it and talk about why we've been having the meetings and the conversation that we have in the level. And this is where we plan to go.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's well, well said. Very good. Very good.
Just one of the one of the thoughts I I think, you know, honing in on that appendix A and getting that done and and, you know, this is the final draft sort of thing and getting it out there is an important first step as well that I think should be a focus area, you know. So that's finalized on. I mean, the Equity Committee is going to take a look at it, you know, next week. You know, when they when they meet, but you know, maybe for all of you, too, any kind of final thoughts, we we put that to bed and that's our that's our statement, you know, for the districts. And then it starts to get shared. We start building on the website, too, like, you know, like, you know, we saw what Granby had, you know, what other districts have, start building those components into the website. So it's a it's an ongoing component.
Yeah, yeah, that's 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 very good. Oh, Kate, I'm sorry. You're on mute.
When we talk about diversity, are we just talking about color, the color of our skin?
I don't think so, Kate. But I do, I do realize that the the stimulus for why what why we're having these conversations comes from that 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 point. I mean, Black Lives Matter and all the issues around that was what was what kind of jolted the the whole system. But as you, as we have had, and we've had the conversation, it's it it is, it it very quickly it expands, okay? Because there's, you know, all sorts of of diversity that that we have. So I I think that I think that that I have this feeling that it it has to do with more with the color of your skin, I guess, at this at at right at this point. But I think that any work that's done just automatically opens up the same conversations about all sorts of different types of diversity. And it's it's good work in 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 doing that. But that's that's.
No, I I just heard different things from different people on the board. So I just wanted clarity on that. That's why I'm asking the question. And I'm thinking as far as getting people, speakers, we've all talked about speakers. I'm thinking that there's storytellers, there's authors, there's people who are artists and facilitators, musicians. Of course, athletes, or maybe I shouldn't say, of course, maybe that's a a microaggression. I shouldn't have said that. I apologize. But there are lots of really talented people that I think that we could bring in that would be phenomenal. And they're available, you know, they're they're here on the Eastern, I mean, they wouldn't, we 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 wouldn't even need to pay for anybody to travel. It's like within an hour travel time kind of thing.
Kate, that's exactly why I wanted to have subcommittees at the school levels, because those are things that they could be doing, you know, and 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 sharing, you know, those between buildings, especially at the elementary level. You know, we had a great speaker that came in. Hey, this is the name, the contact information. The other two schools could do it as well, you know.
And one more thing before I pass the baton is that I'm on the board for Art Reach, which is a mental health group. It's up in Norwich and they did a phenomenal Zoom presentation. They hired professional actors to come in and the name of the show was Who Are These People? And it was a 45-minute play and it was originally written, I think, back in the 70s, 1970s. So it was kind of a a probably like a Fortune 500 company and people who had moved up in the company and some who didn't move up in the company. So long story short, and they were like, well, who are these people? And why do they decorate their office? And why do they look like that? And why do they eat that kind of food? So they're all kind of going back and forth. But the really important thing that happened as a result of it was the conversation that people are like, well, what would you say if somebody said that? Immediately, would you kind of be like, well, I like the way she, I like the color of her clothes, or I like how she decorates her office, or have you tried those refried beans? Those are really good, you know, like, are you going to put that up, you know, put continue to sustain that divert that barrier is what I'm trying to say? Or are you going to say, well, you know, if you tried it, you might have a different opinion, you know, are you going to open the door or hold the gate? It's kind of what I'm trying to get at. But that was something that might be available. And they did it on a Zoom call that I was on, I think, last Thursday. But that would be something that I would really strongly recommend. But and and I'm done.
Good. No, very, very good. Very good. Very good. Jill, do you have anything you want to say? If you're there?
I'm here. I'm sorry. No, not at this point.
Okay, thank you. Just I just want to make sure that we were hearing. So Barry? Oh, I'm mute. There you go.
Barry's on mute, guys.
I think Candace had her hand up before I did, so she goes first.
Oh, okay. All right, Candace?
Very nice of you, Barry. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So just to kind of caveat on what Kate was talking about, I think that's a good idea for Art Reach. Also, I was right about to say the Hygienic Art Studio in New London, I think, has incredible resources and opportunities. So that kind of leads back to some of the conversation that I had had a few meetings back now. Well, I think it was this, the first meeting with Joelle was, you know, kind of identifying when I moved here, my family, my father, that just the lack of exposure from what I've seen kind of is is a contributor, right? Because when children don't see anyone different or anything different or exposed to any type of different culture, anything different than what their normal is, there is an op, there's, there's a moment where it it becomes odd. And and what we what what I noticed, what we noticed was that that was the difference that is now a target. So whether or not we're talking about hair or skin color or the way that you may dress because of cultural preferences, it it could be anything. But if it's not the normal, their normal, it's odd, it's weird, it's something that it prompts that response. And I I don't really necessarily know why, but I do think that it it goes back to not having exposure. And I kept asking myself what what made it different for me or different for my children. And definitely for me, it was because I grew up in a very diverse area, a very diverse neighborhood, diverse schools, where I was the minority, not the majority. For my children, you know, I we have to we have to go out of town, you know, for certain things and and you know, so I don't think that parents would normally have that conversation with their children if they didn't either have to or were prompted to. So we have always had the conversation with with our kids because we have a diverse biracial family. So at some point, you know, the kids were going to say, why do you, why are you white, mommy? Papa's black. They don't get it. So that's the conversation and different opportunities that we've had. But I have seen that that's just not something that is available here readily. So if we start to kind of break those things down, they will be, they they won't be indifferent anymore. And it could be just as easy as at reading time in kindergarten, you know, the a different choice of book and maybe a few different dolls that they might have available or prompts or something like that. So there are small ways that you can you know, put that into the curriculum very readily, very easily. If teachers felt comfortable, because I am hearing that maybe some are not, and that's a bigger, you know, discussion, right? In teaching and all of those things. But if teachers want to, I think that they should be able to. I think that they should be able to bring different cultures into their classrooms. I immediately go to Ms. Kujia. Some may know Ms. Kujia, some may not, but you know, she had brought her culture into the classroom and the kids would come home and they would be speaking the language and all of these different things. And it was just a great way to to bring new exposures in. So.
Good. Excellent. Barry? Barry?
Hey, yep. Kate brings up a very good point about teachers that I've wanted to elaborate on is that working with teachers in the classroom, they get really frustrated with having, you know, they have like so many weeks to cover the information on a particular unit. And then they get directive that says, well, for these four days, we're going to take you off of that unit and you have to do these these other things. And so they they throw their 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 shoulders up and say, well, how can I do what I'm supposed to do? And then do all these add-ons that were given. So I think if we're going to do something like take an idea like you had, Tim, teachers have to be involved. You know, we have to like basically push it down to them and say within your team, within your unit, we would very much like you to develop a unit, integrate into your existing unit with books, examples, whatever, issues of equity and diversity as related to the work of Martin Luther King. They can do it and they will be much happier to do it. They can do it much more effectively than we. They can do it much more effectively than we could do by bringing in a speaker and doing something that's one off of their curriculum. It has to go back down to the teachers and the, everything that we have to do on this has to be integrated within the existing curriculum.
Yeah, that, that, that's a really good point. That's why I was asking Jeff if the diversity committee and how, how, and then how he would, if we were to say, let's see if we could do something a little special, you know, around Martin Luther King Day as a kind of a, as a way to get more visibility, to get, become more visible with this. And I, and I agree completely, Barry, with what you were saying about, it has to be, you know, bought in by teaching staff and, and across the district. If, if something is going to, you know, occur. And that's, that's why, that's why I was, I was kind of just saying, if we do any, if we just did, it's, it's something that would be better than what would, would occur. So that's, I think that's a great point.
I just want to add right now, what does occur is very little.
Right. Yeah.
I just want to, I want to add that. I mean, it's very little. It's something actually a few community members have sent in, you know, emails right around that time. Kind of, you know, can we elaborate more? Can we do more? Can we work more into the curriculum? And, and I just think that it's a great opportunity to do that.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
So very quickly, just building off of that, if we had access to the school improvement plans for last year, we would have a baseline of the amount of work that was done on this issue. And then if we had a new set of school improvement plans for this next year, we would be able to see what is the plan going forward and how we're going to build from the baseline of last year into more involved coverage of issues of equity and diversity going forward.
Barry, just to be clear with, with the school improvement plan. So are you looking for pieces that would, because I, there wasn't, I don't think there's much in there as it pertains to equity and inclusion. When we drafted that four or five years ago, that really wasn't at the forefront of our thoughts. It was, you know, the technology sort of things. Are you looking for pieces that might be in there? Just help, explain that a little bit more, just so I'm clear as to what you're trying to be pulling out. Did that go through, Barry? I'm sorry.
You're on.
You're on mute, Barry.
Yeah, okay. I hit a key on my keyboard, one of the function keys, and it just took me off of everything. So all right, I'm back off mute. Basically, Jeff, that could, that's a, takes to my point. If we looked at the plans going backwards, there is very little in it. So we could say that's our baseline. Okay, so this is where we're beginning. There is very little in it. Now, if we then develop school improvement plans going forward, we could say, you know, as a measure of like how we improve, here's the baseline 1920 and here's the improvement 2021 in terms of how we up the ante on equity, diversity and inclusion. You know, from what we did in the past to going forward based upon our new initiative. And if, using the school improvement plans, it puts it down, it pushes it down into the schools themselves, into the principals, into the teachers and into, into the structural teams.
I really love that. And I think that it puts an accountability measure on our board too, which I really like.
Yeah. That's clear, Barry. That helps. I wasn't sure what you were looking for. So that you get a baseline really, because there wasn't much work at all that was done. So it leaves us. All right, got it. Thanks.
Yeah. That, no, I got it too. Yeah. So. Um, okay. So we have some, it seems like we're, we're kind of coming around some sort of a, can, a little bit of a consensus here in terms of initiative of hiring and increasing the diversity in our teaching staff. That seems to be one. We have the, this, this idea of the, the guests, I'll just call it the guest speaker option, which has all sorts of different facets to it. There's continued to have the conversations and increase the board's overall awareness of this topic. So, and then, then we have the idea of doing something around Martin Luther King Day. And then, and then, then there's, it's really kind of comes down to starting to put together some framework for a strategic plan around the equity and inclusion. And then having that, children plans, there would be the, the, the addition of diversity, equity and inclusion into school improvement plans as well as, as Barry and Jeff were just talking about. That's, does that sound kind of where our head is, is at this point?
Tim, can I just ask, are you including in there that appendix A, like that district or Board of Ed statement?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, definitely.
To get done and, and settled.
Yep.
Wholeheartedly.
Yep. Okay. So Jeff and I were talking. It would be nice if, I was thinking maybe a very small ad hoc committee of the board that would focus on developing framework for, for a strategic plan across this area, this whole thing. And, and, you know, kind of, kind of going right down the, the, down the path that everybody was saying in terms of what, what Barry was, was showing us and what the Humphrey School had, had devised. So that was, that was, that was one thought that popped in that would help facilitate and moving, moving the bigger picture forward to ones. Jeff, I'm not sure what the best, you know, tact is for, for the, those, the shorter term ones.
Yeah, I mean, and I'd almost like to build a timeline of sorts too. As in the past, I think doing that in various capacities over, not issues, but items of, of importance. So trying to put something together which would allow us to kind of track and, and, and decide when things are going to happen, basically. So, but yeah, and that group, Tim, like I said, could, could talk about short-term and long-term items. And I look at some of the short-term items as things that, you know, we could start to, the website, we could start to build, you know, a, a section on our website. Those little smaller things that are, you know, low hanging fruit that we could get taken care of that at least get us positioned to be able to move forward.
Yeah. So how does, what, so where's everybody's head right now? Let me just, Eric, I'll use a border here.
No, this is, this was really good and helpful. I, I, I'm aligned with exactly what we're saying. I'm a little, so, and, and I really like doing something around the Martin Luther King holiday. You know, I could see us sending the statement out or something pre, you know, as we approach this weekend. You know, things to think about and, and, and it'd be nice if we could actually do a couple more things associated with that. But in terms of the five-year plan and coming together, doing something like that, I, I think it's great. I'm, in back of my mind, it feels daunting, the, the amount of effort. And, you know, I personally, it's something I'd be interested in doing, but I also worry about how much time and commitment and what that will look like and how to make that happen. But this was really good. Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was wondering if Barry would like to partner with me and if anybody else would like to participate. Maybe the two, the, the two of us that are quasi-retired, one's retired and one's quasi-retired. Maybe we could put our heads together and, and kind of come up with something. And then bring it, bring it back to the board. And again, this is, I don't know, five years, two years, three years, I don't, you know, whatever, whatever makes sense. But I think, I think having a framework that kind of captures the buckets that we would like to see progressed over, over the next few, few years. I think that that would be very, very helpful. Barry, would you be interested in, in doing that? With?
How can I draw it down?
I think you'll be great for it. I almost want to nominate you. I think that you'd do a great job. And I think that I, I loved what you already kind of put in there. I think that you're going to be great.
That's good. Would anybody, would, would anybody else, like if Barry, let's say if Barry and I do the heavy lifting, would any, we, it would be nice to have one other board member just to take a, a look at some of the stuff, not necessarily have to do heavy lifting. And Lee, I was wondering if you might be interested because you're connected to the diversity committee.
Yes, yes. I would be very interested. Um, I, in addition to the diversity committee in terms of heavy lifting, I'd be worried about the capacity I would be able to devote to it. But in terms of like a sounding board and feedback, I would be more than happy to bond here.
I kind of look at it as quality control.
All right, sign me up.
Okay, okay. So I, I think that, that would, that'll help with that. Um, Jeff, you and I, we'll, we'll get together and we'll have some more conversations around these other buckets to see, to kind of, kind of start to set a, a game plan and a timetable for these other very important areas is the, and how we're going to go about, you know, advancing them. But I, I think that this is, this is, this is kind of going in the right direction. Bill?
I, I agree. I think this is great. And I think Barry's point of, of blending it in with what teachers are already doing and making sure that they're part of it. The Martin Luther King thing, I, I mean, not that we're going to tell them what to do specifically, but I don't think it would be that difficult, Jeff, if we're, if we're suggesting and we're getting the teachers to say, listen, we're going to, you know, play up Martin Luther King a little bit more and, and, and mention that it's going to be more, you know, drifting towards more the, like the Veterans Day, not, I, I wouldn't get into the not having the day off thing. That's a whole different can of worms. But, but if you, if you talk about a week and say, okay, every teacher find a way to weave into this week's lessons, something that has to do with, you know, Martin Luther King's message, or even if it's just, you know, somehow incorporating some diversity into your lesson this week. I don't think that would be that difficult. And I don't think it would have to go outside of what's necessarily already going on, you know? I, I don't know. That's just my thought.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, Bill. I've, I've got it on as an agenda item for the Equity and Inclusion Districtwide Committee to discuss. I think letting them take that back. And I'll also, also speak with the administrators about it, but then we farm it out, you know, to the teachers. Just like you said, you know, just come up with something, something that can be done. I'm not looking for you to, you know, do a ton of work, you know, you know, everybody's taxed right now, but just come up with incorporated into, you know, some, one of your lessons or something that you're doing. So it gives more exposure for kids.
Okay. I, I think most teachers would want to, to bridge this gap.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and, and like Candace pointed out, I agree that not a lot's being done, but I don't think it's by choice. It's just by design. It's, it's just, this is the way we've been taught. This is what we're told to deliver. And no one's educated us on delivering anything other than that, no. And unless someone has a personal agenda to, to weave it in, it's not, you know, we didn't go, or at least when I went and took my education classes, they didn't make a point of saying, well, make sure you do this. You know, and, you know, so, and there's.
I think that's a great point. It's, it's a great point that you're saying that because it's true.
Yeah, it's like, you know, it wasn't what they were teaching me to teach at the time.
And, and how much kind of missed opportunity? That's kind of how I view that. So to have the opportunity to, to really kind of take the reins and to use their creativity, I, I can think of probably 10 teachers that would be going, this is awesome. I'm kind of excited that I get to do this.
Definitely.
And then some way, Jeff, you know, for those who don't mind showcasing their work, we could kind of document that a little bit and play it up a little bit. Maybe you get a news story. I, I, not, not that we need to, not that I'm looking for the PR piece of it, but more of the, hey, this is a great thing that somebody did in their class. Maybe some other teacher wants to do it too.
But right there, it's not the PR part. It's the part of setting the tone. Nobody's near the tone unless you start putting it out. So it's not the PR point either that I'm looking for, but it's really for me, the thought pattern that the more people that are seeing that these are the steps that we're taking because we want to see change here, that's where you're going to get that, that.
I, I would be.
But if we make sure it doesn't look like we're trying to do some PR thing, because we certainly don't want to go down that road, but I, I, I think it would be great.
Yeah. Good.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Are we, I, I think this was, was extremely helpful. I, I can tell by the tenor of everybody's voice that we're, we're start, we're starting to feel a little bit better about, about kind of where we're at, right at this moment. And I'm, I'm sure we're gonna, gonna keep it, keep it moving along here. So that's good. And that's great. Anything else, Jeff, that?
I don't, I don't think so, Tim. Just, you know, writing down for my own action steps, I just made an action step category here. I'm, I'm still thinking about the subcommittees at the school level and the work that they need to be doing and engage in. The CREC Learn Partnership potentially, or in minority recruitment. MLK work. Right now.
Can I just note something real quick, Tim? I, I know that I mentioned this, but I haven't in a, in a last couple of meetings, that you can do the equity inclusion in a smaller increments throughout the schools also through the PTAs. I know that Lily B had started a group and it might be something that, that the other elementary schools might, might find to be useful. You know, the middle school also.
Yep, yep. That's good. Kate, I see, yeah, your hand. Yep.
Well, just one other thing is that the idea of microaggressions. And I think if people start thinking about that, and you can just look that up too. And there's different themes for microaggressions. It's seeing somebody as an alien. So where are you from? A description of intelligence, wow, you're really smart. Or where'd you, where'd you get that idea, you know, talking to somebody or she's really articulate or something like that. Those are all microaggressions. Color blindness, just the idea. So I have, I have friends who are black and they're like, I don't see the color. Well, you do see the color because they are a different color. And that also is a strength to that relationship that they bring that cultural diversity into your relationship. So then the idea, you know, sometimes the people says, I don't see, say, I don't see color. Then you're like, well, how do you know when to stop when you're at a traffic light? You know, if you don't see color, you know, it's just kind of a funny little response that you can give back to somebody. Criminality or assumption of criminality. So there's just like, there's a whole list of these kinds of things. But I think that could be like, almost like an action item that teachers could also like start to identify things. And then there's a whole list of, of expressions, like calling somebody a crackerjack or saying that there's a tipping point. Those are all racial in nature. Those and, and need to be brought up and people need to be aware of those and look at those. And we need to kind of, and even the grandfather clause, that's another one. We need to try carefully to be better, I guess, with our language and the kinds of words we use to describe what we don't think of as, as maybe a hurtful microaggression. But they are.
Yeah.
Quite simply, they are.
Yep, yep, yep. Wow. Okay. All right. So I think we are good to go. Okay. The committee, the whole meeting, I don't know if we need to adjourn officially or not. I don't think so. No. And Jamie said, check the policy chair. She shook her head no. So. So with that, thank, thank everybody for participating and I think it was really helpful. Eric, thanks for kicking us a little bit, a couple, couple of meetings ago to kind of get, get, to get our act together here. So, okay. So with that, I will, we will see each other next Monday. Okay, yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Everyone, thanks.